All right, I want to welcome everyone and call this meeting to order of the Monroe County Council on this Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Note for the record, it is five-ten P. M. We are getting started a little bit late, and I appreciate all the indulgence with that from folks that have been waiting. We will try not to do that, and also the assistance as we get new technology in here to communicate and access with the meeting. With that, I will note that all councilors are present and in the meeting room, including Counselor Munson, Counselor Hawke, Counselor McKim, Counselor Crossley, Counselor Wiltz, and Counselor Iverson. All right. With that, we will now turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. We now turn to item number three on our list, which is the adoption of the agenda. I'm going to make a note, and then I'll invite councilors if there's anything else on this agenda you want to change. I'll notice that on item fourteen A in the agenda, we had a very much anticipated consideration and potential adoption of an inter-local agreement related to the CIB. Unfortunately, that, I'm going to, I just want to update all that I received a communication today on behalf of the city administration, as well as the city council, that it is their preference that we hold that until our next meeting due to some ongoing and continued discussion related to language. We have been working very diligently and hard on language. I want to thank all councilors for that. And in the spirit of that dialogue with our partners at the city, I would ask if there are no objections that we table that item to our next meeting, item fourteen A.
Second, no objections.
No objections, so ordered. Thank you, councilors. Councilors, are there any other changes to the agenda as you see it? So with that, we do not need a motion to adopt it now that we've done that? All right, awesome. We will next move, thank you very much for that, a little bit of housekeeping, keep us moving here. Number, item four is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. There will be a time limit for anyone in this room or anyone on teams that wishes to make a comment on items not on our agenda. We welcome that. So we'll invite you, anyone wishing to make a public comment can come forward in the room or raise your hand on teams. I'll ask all folks that come forward or raise your hand to state your name, just so we have it for our record. Welcome.
Hi, Daniel Olson, just a private citizen. I'm here to talk about the upcoming election in November, the State House elections for District sixty-two. I want to encourage everyone here, both on the council and in the public, to come out and support Thomas Horricks for the sixty-second district. Thomas is a pastor and a chaplain in the National Guard, and he's someone who understands a lot about the families in this community. And one thing about Thomas, as you get to talk to him, you know, these last five to ten years, something that's been kind of a growing trend in state legislatures is state governments who are working against the local governments, not with them, and India, Indiana is no exception to that. If you've paid attention these last two weeks to our state legislature, a number of bills have already been passed through, or at least have come out of committees, that seem to be aimed at hurting local governments' authority, not helping them. And we need more people up there like Thomas, who understand that the expectation of citizens, both in this county and across the state, are that state legislatures work with the local officials, not against them, work with the school boards, work with the county councils, work with the city councils, work with the clerks, work with the sheriff, not, don't cut their legs out from under them just because you don't agree politically on certain issues. You can see this with the Indigo Blue Line, you can see this with a bill that came out of committee last week that can make it harder for local governments to get referendums in non-presidential years. You can see this with a bill that actually the State House District Representative, Dave Hall, had a bill go through the House today for creating, I think, homes on slopes, and it was pointed out by Matt Pierce, the other representative for this, for this county, that this may hurt some parts of the state, because local officials really weren't consulted on this bill. So this is a really common theme, and so the more people like Thomas we can get up there, the easier your job can be. I think the number-one goal of a state representative would be to reach out to you guys and find out what you need to do your jobs easier, and what areas they can back off, so you, you know, because you seem to have it. So, yeah, please come out, everyone here and in the public, and support Thomas's campaign. It'll be the closest race in the state, so every vote's gonna matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olson. Sorry, I'm still getting used to our microphone. I'm not seeing anyone else in the Natty Hill. I am seeing a raised hand on teams, Eric Spoonmore, if we can elevate him or whatever we need to do.
Good evening, council. This is Eric Spoonmore, President of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, I wanted, and also in addition to my role on the, with the chamber, I'm also, you're all's appointment to the Capital Improvement Board, which is one of the reasons why I'm here today to give comments. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm down in French Lick at a conference where we were getting an update and a lot of information on the severe housing crisis that we're experiencing in Monroe County and other parts of the Indiana uplands. But what I wanted to talk to you today about was just a quick update on the business environment downtown. I know you all are probably aware that we've had a number of local businesses, mainly in the food industry, food and beverage industry, that have closed over the last few weeks. And anytime that happens, it's very saddening to me and to the Chamber of Commerce and everybody in our organization. I just wanted to say that one thing that you all can do, and I know that you're committed to doing, that can help these businesses survive and thrive into the future, is to continue to be a very strong advocate for the Convention Center expansion. Anytime a business like that in our downtown closes, it, like I said, it's very saddening to me, and it keeps me up at night, you know? I wonder what could we do as a community that would have allowed them to avoid having to make some very tough decisions to close their doors? And so, these are our employees, these are our workers here, their livelihoods, and we hate to see those difficult decisions being made by business owners. So anything we can do as a community to really step up and help out our businesses, and when government and business are working together on these things, I think is when we're gonna have our best outcome, and some of the lowest-hanging fruit, as you all know, is our Convention Center. So please do keep up all the great work on negotiating that inter-local. I'm confident that we'll get that done and buttoned up here soon, and we'll be able to get started earnest on the Convention Center expansion that we all desperately want to see happen. So thanks for everything that you do to support the business community, and thanks for everything that you do to support our residents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spoonmore. And as I scan for more hands, I do want to note that while we do not have the CIB on this agenda now tonight due to the request we received from the city, I want all councilors to be aware that we're gonna be prepped to move, move, move on that. I've heard that from every single one up at this rostrum, and we're gonna keep on that pattern as best we can. And to our partners across the way, same thing, move, 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 we gotta do it. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we're gonna move on then. Thank you very much for those speaking, and please always know, the public is welcome in this chamber to talk about those items specifically, not on the agenda or as we take each of these items. We move now to department updates.
I'm sorry, it was, it was pointed out that the captions are not on this particular screen. Is it possible to get the captions onto the screen?
T S D, we'll take a second. We got him.
Thank you.
All right. There's a lot of, lot of great production going on here, so thank you, T S D. We appreciate you and Katz for covering us, as well as the journalists here in the room. We're at departmental updates, and I'll invite departments to come forward in the room. I have a couple that had previously communicated. We've got from the Correctional Center, I see Jordan Miller approaching, and Kyle Gibbons, our commander, to give us our semi-annual summary of the commissary fund.
Good evening, council. Jordan Miller, Financial Coordinator for the jail, here today, or this evening to discuss the commissary summary for the second portion of two thousand and twenty-three. I'll start off by mentioning the balance. As of July first was one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. There were a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-three cents worth of receipts, a hundred and seventy-three thousand, fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents worth of expenditures, with an ending balance of forty-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. I figured it might be beneficial to just kind of go over some of the larger expenditures, starting with equipment. It's approximately fifty-two point five percent of that one hundred and seventy-three thousand and change, primarily inmate clothing, hygiene products, blankets, things of the like. Bob Barker was one of the, probably the biggest vendor that we use for those types of equipment items. And then, of course, some Nelson and Company and Handcuffs, things of that sort from Nelson, excuse me, from Galls, that were for our pull-those pants, flashlights, things of that, things like that. The next item or next expenditure was the tech equipment, which was approximately twenty-three point nine percent, and those were for things such as hosted Winscrib subscription, basically protection and things of that sort. I'm sure individuals up there might be able to explain that a little bit better than myself, but security and such for servers and databases, things of that need. And finally, just commissary inventory is a large, approximately fifteen percent of those expenses, which is primarily pouches, e-cigs, and beverages from Pepsi-Cola. So at this point, I have listed things by categories. I didn't choose to go into detail about some of the more obvious ones, such as inmate haircuts and document destruction, but if you might have any particular or specific questions, I'd be glad to answer any of those that might arise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. We'll open it up to councilors up here for questions from our friends at the jail. Any questions at all? Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
It does work. I just wanted to say thanks for the, your prompt presentation and delivery of this report, because it may seem like not that big a deal to you all in the grand scheme of your budget, but it's very informative for us to kind of understand another aspect of what goes on in the jail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, it's important that you share this information with the public, because it is one of the places that sheriffs can get in trouble if they are of a mind to do that. I'm so glad we don't have that problem here. But this is showing the public that we don't have the problem here, and we are not trying to hide anything that's going on with the finances, because this is a budget that does not require appropriation, and so you wouldn't be required to, you know, tell us routinely as often as you might, but I expect anytime anybody wants to ask you about this, that we'll get an answer. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. McKim.
Thank you. So since the expenditures are greater than the, than the revenue, obviously, they're spending down existing balance, is that going to be an issue, or were some of the, for example, some of the equipment charges essentially one-time expenses that...
There were a number of items, equipment purchased, that were one-time expenses, so we do project that, that number, that balance to actually grow quite a bit. We are...
Sure. So some of the issue originally was, in terms of housing, we house about, on the average, right now, sixty to seventy-five more people. So mats, inmate uniforms, hygiene stuff, we spent a lot of money, actually more than we anticipated, on whites, shirts, underwear, bras, all of those things. So what we're trying to do is figure out a way, if you're here for a certain amount of time, we can take some of that back, launder it, unless you need it when you leave. If you, if you come in with things, we make sure you leave with things, but if you don't, then you leave with the things that we purchased. So we're trying to find a way to recycle some of that cost, and you'll see that our, our sum go up, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? I'm seeing none. We want to thank you very much for this update. Also want to thank the sheriff for being here, as well as Mr. Grass and others. We appreciate that very much, and we look forward to receiving more updates on this and other issues. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Next up on department updates, we actually have our friends at the Monroe County Library here, and so I'll invite them to come up. I shouldn't say friends at the library, that's a separate entity. We've got people from the library, come on up. Specifically, we welcome Greer Carson, our library director, as well as Christine Matthew, architect, and we are just so excited that you are here to tell us some good things.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Let's see. Almost six years ago, in two thousand and eighteen, Matthew Architects partnered with the Monroe County Public Library to develop a feasibility study for a new branch library. Marilyn Wood, the library director at the time, and our office engaged the Monroe County community in conversations, surveys, questionnaires, and lots of meetings with community groups. Cheryl Munson actually helped us set up one of the community meetings down the southwest quadrant of the county, as a matter of fact, a really successful community meeting. Among the community representatives were members of the county council, Monroe County commissioners, I know we spoke to Marty at one point, township trustees, the Monroe County Planning Department, the Department of Planning and Transportation, the Monroe County School Corporation, the Broadview Learning Center, the Community Foundation, the Center for Rural Engagement, the Cook Group's Division for Industry and Government Affairs. I mentioned this really long list, because I want to let you know that all the information that we gathered from the community really is the backbone of the new Southwest branch. Where to best locate the library, what the programs were best suited for the southwest quadrant of the county. The building you see today is the result of an incredible amount of community input and imagination. It is the reason I truly believe the building has been embraced by the community and why it is such a success. Matthew Architects has had the pleasure to work with, with Monroe County for many years, renovation of the Convention Center, the Curry Building, and the courthouse we're meeting in right now, our office did the renovation of this building. We've had the pleasure to work with Monroe County Library since two thousand and thirteen, first serving as the architect for the renovation of the Monroe County Main Library, including the teen center, for instance, which has been a great success, followed by renovation in addition to the Ellisville Library, another great, successful teen center and meeting room addition. The new Southwest branch is our most recent shared venture with Monroe County Library, under this time, under the creative leadership of Greer Carson, who's been actually fabulous to work with. We are enormously grateful for the continued faith the county and the library has put in us. The community's enthusiastic response to the Southwest branch has been enormously gratifying and is everything an architect wishes to achieve and is trained to do. The American Institute of Architects agrees, apparently, that the new Southwest branch is a design success. On January tenth, what, two weeks ago, the AIA Indianapolis awarded Matthew Architects a Citation Award for Excellence in Design at the annual AIA Gala event in Indianapolis, where Greer Carson, Ryan Strausser of Strausser Construction, and Chris Floyd of Matthew Architects and I accepted the award, along with a group of sixteen of us, the team members who are kind of the creative group behind the project, joined us for this gala event. To put this award in perspective, the AIA award is like winning the Indiana Oscar in architecture. The AIA is the architect profession's gold standard. Needless to say, we are thrilled to have been recognized for our design achievement by our professional colleagues, and we cannot thank the county and the Monroe County Public Library in particular for giving us the opportunity to serve Monroe County in this great endeavor, and to prove that we did win the award, I brought it with me. I, in fact, forgot it on the table, so it's, it's your award as much as our award. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you all. Good evening. I suppose the best way I can put this is that the universe has a wicked sense of humor, because just a few short days after we received this award, I got a phone call at seven-thirty in the morning from our Building Services Director, Brian Leibacher, who said, "You might want to head out here as quickly as possible. We have a leak." So just so everybody knows, if you haven't already heard, we have unfortunately had to shut down the Southwest branch temporarily due to an HVAC system failure, which, as best we can tell at this point, is a direct result of the frigid temperatures and some of the precipitation that we've dealt with over the last week and a half. Some of the details include the dampers for the HVAC system, which are located on the roof and are exposed to the elements, frozen in open position, which allowed a lot of very, very cold air into the system. When that cold air met with the hot water from the boiler as part of regular HVAC operations, it split some of the pipes. Water came cascading down through the ceiling tiles and onto the floor. A couple of inches of water then pulled up in that area and spread through most of the northwest quadrant of the building, impacting the flooring and the drywall and some of the furniture and shelving, and indeed, the insulation inside of the walls themselves. So we had to close immediately. Fortunately, we work with an incredible group of mitigation experts and service providers, restoration service providers, our insurance company, and even Strausser Construction and Matthew Architects all rallied together within a period of twelve hours, got on-site and figured out what it is we needed to do. So for the time being, we are unfortunately closed to the public. We've put a lot of public messaging out for patrons to know how they can get their holds, if they had holds on the shelves at Southwest, which we can then reroute to downtown or to Ellisville. We're working to relocate some of the scheduled programs that were at South, at Southwest, and also looking at some alternative location for some of those meeting room reservations that people had in place for a very long time. Our staff are taking it like champs, I'll tell you. I really felt so badly for them because their heart is so invested in being a part of that new branch and making connections with the patrons who themselves are really in love, as Christine had mentioned, with this new building, and it's really heartbreaking to say, a few short months after opening, we have to close for a little while, but it is what we have to do, and we're gonna move as quickly as possible to reopen. I can't give an official reopening date just yet. We're in the middle of the insurance assessment, subrogation process, so I don't know. It is probably going to be a little while. So we're trying to look at it as glass half-full. It could have been a lot worse. We could have, could have happened while we were open, while we had patrons there, could have happened while we had staff there, could have happened in multiple parts of the building, instead it was somewhat localized. Obviously, our biggest priority is to figure out exactly how this occurred, exactly how we prevent it from ever happening again at that building, and indeed, our other two facilities, and most importantly, when we can commit to the public to reopening the branch. So I just wanted to give you all an update. It's not fun to follow Christine and the award announcement, but it is, it is our reality right now, and we're working through it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carson. Do we have any comments or questions from the council, Counselor McKim?
Thank you. Thanks for that explanation of the situation. Are any employees unemployed during this time or losing work hours?
Certainly not. Nope, good. We take care of our employees and are proud of that fact. Most of them are still working on-site, because the staff workroom areas were not impacted, but because it can be difficult to work in what is now effectively a construction site once again, we brought a lot of our Southwest staff downtown into Ellisville to connect with their partners in some of the special audience areas, to give them temporary office spaces and to make sure that they're focused on their work, and, and maybe not focusing too much on the setbacks, so everybody's pulled together in that respect.
Thank you.
I was just thinking, this is a, an opportunity for all the science teachers to be speaking with their pupils. This is what happens. I, I'm thinking of that because my daughter teaches science, and I, I think she would be latching on to that and thinking, how could she make sure her students understood how that might have happened? That's, that's no reassurance to you that it's never gonna happen again, but nevertheless, it's sort of like trying to make lemonade out of those lemons, so.
It's a case study that life presents sometimes.
Right. And she's such a lover of our library here. She grew up in, you know, the Ellisville Library, so it was really sad to see that happen.
And one other thing I will mention, if I could, we put the word out quickly last Monday, and have had a follow-up since. The, the response from the community has been incredible, overwhelming support and sympathy for the library itself, of course, but also for our staff. And I'm very, very grateful to Monroe County citizens and our patrons in general for expressing that sympathy and, and for being patient, because nobody likes to get that news, and people want their materials and access to their buildings, so we're very grateful for that.
Counselor Wiltz.
I just wanted to pass along that my husband utilizes the Southwest branch for a fairly regular meeting, and was called the morning that happened, and told that, yep, won't be happening today, but was immediately directed on rescheduling to the Ellisville location. He has since, today, I think, had a meeting at the Ellisville branch, and when I asked him how his meeting was when he came home, the only thing he said was, "Those library people are so nice." So, you know, I think you all are handling it really well.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I will pass that along.
It's funny, the last two times I've been to the library, I think I've run into your husband there at a meeting, so.
Well, I just want to reiterate some comments I made to you earlier today. That branch is the best thing since sliced bread. I think the world of that, and truly, of all the things that we've been any part of, since I have served on this council, that thing is a crown jewel of our community, and I look, I use it all the time. I have, I've done meetings there electronically, in-person, taken my girls. It's awesome, and anything we can do as a community to be supportive of that, and the other branches, obviously, please let us know, and I'd call on everyone in the community, everything they can, to help this thing get back up to, to where it was, and we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Counselor Munson.
I'd just like to say, please come back when you're ready to open and tell everybody, so we can help you spread the word.
Happy to do it.
And we do also have your strategic plan here.
Yes, very quickly, I would just like to share with you all that we have adopted our new strategic plan. We do this every three to five years, per the requirements of the Indiana State Library. We worked through our strategic plan last year with a committee of staff and M C P L trustees. What you have in front of you is really kind of a combination of our strategic plan and sort of a promotional piece for the community about M C P L services. The actual detailed strategic plan is on our website, and it goes into the five stated goals and some action items we plan to take over the next three years, but I thought I'd summarize that just a bit for you all tonight. So our new plan is for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-six. It is very much an extension of the previous plan in terms of the stated goals. We usually adopt four stated goals, having to do with collection development, program services, community partnerships, and facilities maintenance and stewardship. This year's a little different, and we have a fifth goal. So our four goals, as a result of community feedback, we got about seventeen hundred survey responses from the community, had some community partner conversations about what's important for M C P L to focus on for the next three years, and those conversations and survey responses informed what our five goals are. And those five goals have to do with collection development and ensuring and advocating for intellectual freedom, particularly in a climate such as ours. intellectual freedom, particularly in a climate such as ours today. Expanding and refining our program offerings. This is a perennial request on the part of the public who see library programming second only to collection access in terms of our core mission and services. Ensuring safe and welcoming facilities, and I'll be very straightforward. We're focusing very much on our downtown library, patron behavior expectations, policies and procedures, and how we can make sure that the downtown library is indeed in attraction much like Southwest and Ellisville are in their own right. The fourth is to cultivate new community partnerships while better defining what a library partnership is. And the fifth, and this is the new one for us, we're adopting an internal strategic goal for this three-year plan, and that is investing in staff retention and development to become an employer of choice within the region and thereby ensuring the level of public service that our community expects of us. We've gone through a whole lot of internal review and restructuring over the last several years and learned a lot about ourselves as an organization and as a workplace culture, and we want to build on that and we want to be open and public about that fact, too. And so that's why that's included as a fifth strategic plan. So we've already started work on some of the action items specific to those goals. One thing people are going to notice within the next couple of months when they log into the library website is a brand-new library catalog. And it's going to be much more intuitive and I would say more fun to use than the one we've had for a very long time. And that's one of our action items for our goals. So we're already getting started. I encourage everybody in the community to go to the MCPL website and go to About, and under there we have plans and policies, and you can see the strategic plan along with our list of 2022 and 23 strategic accomplishments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carson. We appreciate it very much. All right. Come back and see us again. Thank you.
Certainly will. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Other departmental updates. I see the treasurer, Kathy Smith.
Good evening, council. I'm here to sort of give you an exit interview as the auditor and entrance, you know, baseline as I start the job of treasurer. So in the auditor's, basically transitioning out of that role, I wanted to speak to you a little bit about the recent audit review that we did have. And I'm kind of glad the library was here because they are one of our component units. So I did want to mention that it was nice to see Christine Matthew because she did this building and we worked very hard with her ten years ago. So it was good to see her and then the library people, it's always good to see them. They're one of our five component units in our county audit. For those of you who were present at the county audit, whether you were there in person or virtually, you heard that it was, we were very, very pleased that the state were accounts that it was the best audit in the state, one of the best they have ever seen in the times that they've worked there. So that was very heart, not just heartwarming, but just made us feel really good because GASB is a difficult method of accounting. It's not just cash accounting, it's accrual accounting. So it takes the three months prior to the year and the three months past the year, which haven't happened yet, and it integrates all that in there to give a better picture for investors. And that's the whole point of GASB accounting is so that the bond ratings are a tickler to the people who want to invest in those bonds on are we doing great? Are we doing good? Are we doing poorly? And it was very clear that they were not just pleased, but were just ecstatic that our audit was so amazing. So I want to thank Bree publicly for that and all the department heads for participating. And I know it's hard when we come to a department head and we say, you know, we need this, this and this, and we need it in a short turnaround time because they've identified something. That prevents us from getting a material weakness and that saves us, when we do our bond rating, to get a better interest rate. So anytime that we're trying to get a very, very good audit, what we're trying to do is save you guys money. So you'll have extra money to spend someplace else. Every penny that we spend in interest on a bond rating, if we get to save that, it can be spent on something else like raises or whatever needs to be purchased in the county. So I wanted to tell you that I'm very, very pleased and just overjoyed that we actually got this. I had been working for the seven years I was auditor to try to get a perfect audit because I really wanted one. And back when you had, when we didn't have the non-GASB ones, it was possible to do that. It was like the unicorn, but it was possible. But this time they showed me in front of everybody that was there, there is no perfect audits anymore. If there is, something's happened wrong on our people, they're not looking close enough, but this is, this is perfect in our eyes and we just want to congratulate you. And when she said that, I thought I was almost going to faint in the room over there. So I wanted to tell you that. So I am kind of leaving on a good note. That's a very high note. You know, the two auditors previous before me had criminal charges against them. And so I really do feel like that we went from the lowest point maybe in our auditing to the highest point in our auditing in these seven years, and I feel like I'm leaving it in good hands. As I transition to the treasurer, I want to touch base with you on what my short-term plan is. And of course, in January, the treasurer is supposed to present to the commissioners a basically a short strategic plan on how they're going to invest. And so what I want to tell you guys, like I did back when I was treasurer the other eight years, is I'm going to give you guys a report card on investments. It's going to tell you where the money's invested, it's going to tell you the interest rate, and it's going to tell you how much we have in each instrument and what institutions it's in. Far as I'm concerned, every single penny we have is public information and public money. There is no reason why you guys, as the decision-makers, as well as the public, should not know where the money is. I do believe in using local banks because of financial institution taxes are returned to this county when things are invested in this county. So that is very, very important to me. I will not invest in paper and I'll transition us out of paper into cash investments because my philosophy for investing is safety, liquidity, and then interest rate. And, you know, paper's not very liquid. Five-year terms are a kind of a long term and I'm just, I prefer things to be much shorter term than that. But each month you'll get this report card on investments. If you have any questions, come see me. Marty, I believe, is going to be my liaison and you can't get anything past Marty if it's financial, so I don't expect to. I expect her and I to work closely and it to be very transparent. So if you don't have any questions, that's what I've got to say. And thank you for letting me serve you as the secretary of your organization for seven years now. I hope I didn't aggravate you too much.
You did not. Questions, Councilor Hawke?
Yes. I'm very interested in hearing, and I know you'll probably want to take time to look this up. You know, we plugged in a figure for what our anticipated interest was going to be for the last six months. And so I'm very interested to see if we hit that mark or not. So if you could look that up.
I would like to not just hit it, but exceed it.
That's what I, because I think it was like right at two million for the last half. Was that correct?
Yeah, two to three, but I'm going to work very, very hard to try to beat that because every penny you've got allows you to do something amazing, so.
But I'm talking about the last half of last year.
Mm-hmm.
So they should know what that number is by now.
That lady over there is fixing to do the annual financial report and we will cover that.
Okay.
And let you know next month.
Right. I was looking forward to meeting with you, as you know.
I would love that.
We know that it's a three-legged stool. It's the assessor, the auditor, and the treasurer. And I just literally twisted arms to get all three of those to be your liaison. So I'm looking forward to those three working together as we must to make all of this work right.
I would be lying if I didn't say it'd be more fun working with you as treasurer than it was working with you as auditor because the auditor is a very, very difficult, I'm not going to sugarcoat that, it is so difficult. It's so wide-ranging and in-depth and different things. You know, this is going to be fun and exciting. I'm very excited. Try to make you guys as much money as I can make you.
Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much, treasurer, and congratulations again on this audit report, which was magnificent. Very cool. Any other departments? Chief Deputy Parker?
I'm going to cover three things in three minutes. Real quick, I just wanted to touch on the commissary just for a couple of things. When sheriff came in, that commissary fund, he met with the staff and outlined his plans for that, and it was two things, very simple. The commissary plan or commissary fund was going to be used for the benefit of the facility and the inmates therein. We wanted to transition that away from things that did not deal with the jail and the inmates. Now, it's impossible, I mean, there are things come up that, but I'd say a large, large percentage of what you're going to see is going to be solely related to jail and for the benefit of our residents. The second thing was to be totally transparent about it. Marty's very right. You watch all over the state, that's a great place to get in trouble if you're a sheriff, if you don't watch it and you're not transparent about it. So we pledged to you that we will always be transparent about that. And any questions you have, we will answer them without hesitation. The second thing I want to talk about just very briefly is that you all received a very short email from Sheriff Marte today about the jail population issues. And I don't think, as we talked about that, if you look at the private settlement agreement, it lays out things that the sheriff must do when he starts noticing these things. So I think it's very important that we just let you know that that was simply our way of letting you know what he's seeing there so we can all be on the same page and there's no surprises to anybody. So I just, I thought it was important that if you read that private settlement agreement, you'll see that the things that he brought up in there are mentioned in the private settlement agreement as things that we should do when those present themselves. The last thing I want to talk to you about is, very quickly, is the eclipse that's coming here April eighth. And I know when I start talking about this, where we had one conversation with K. Wiltz about additional appropriations and we're getting schooled up on all that and everything. And so I'm not asking for anything here, I'm just giving you a heads-up that we anticipate, we just had a meeting today, we've got two of our command staff that are attending lots of meetings about this. It is, everybody looks at it, what are you so worried about an eclipse? This is going to be no joke, I'm telling you. The horror stories we're hearing about how this, how it affects public safety are, it's going to be a very serious issue. So what, we're just giving you the heads-up that we anticipate anywhere from around up to four hundred thousand visitors in this county for that eclipse. They're saying that we might possibly have a hundred thousand people just in Ellisville alone because the prime spot's supposed to be at a location in Ellisville. So, but as it relates to this discussion, we have projected that we will probably use about twenty-five percent of our entire overtime allotment in our budget in a three-day period, the day before, the day of, and the day after the eclipse. So, you know, again, the sheriff's commitment to you is complete transparency, no surprises. We want to let you know heads-up. Obviously, we have an overtime budget. We will attack that overtime with that budget. But later down the year, depending on how things go and how frugal we may or may not be able to be, we've got the little five hundred, we've got the fair, all of those things coming. We, I just want to let you that that is going to be an issue this year. So I think I got it done in three minutes or pretty close to. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Councilors, any questions? We're good. Thank you very much and appreciate the updates. I know the liaisons have some issues they're working with and we appreciate that very much. So we appreciate that swift communication. All right. Any other department?
Thank you.
Okay. We've got from the auditor's office.
I'll be very brief, everyone. So I'm going to jump on the transparency train and just give you a little update here. At the, last year, the Correctional Center received pay increases. In the spirit of trying to be conservative, the Correctional Center did some in-house transfers, some category transfers, however, came up a little bit short at the end of the year with the PERF, which is the Public Employees Retirement Fund. So what we did is technically, the sheriff's department encompasses the jail as well, so we moved the expenses from the jail budget into the sheriff's budget and all is well. So I just wanted to give you that update, so it's noted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The efforts to get the train back to the track. All right. With that, we are going, any other departmental updates? I think that matters close. Let's move to item number six, which is council liaison updates. Councilors to my left, Peter, Councilor Iverson?
I have two, just very briefly. I want to welcome Victoria Seest to Monroe County. She is the Monroe County Climate Fellow and she is going to be helping us write the resilience plan for Monroe County. Welcome, Victoria. My second update I want to bring is a thank you to another person. Nolan Hendon has been volunteering in the county on the Environmental Commission for many years as president of that body. He's overseen a lot of growth and he stepped down at our last meeting. So thank you, thank you, thank you to Nolan Hendon for all the work that he's done.
Other liaison updates? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Councilor Iverson. We will move now to just an item of note here, item number seven. During the county liaison appointments on January ninth, and I appreciate very much that process that we used on that, this council did a remarkable job, in my humble opinion, in getting that done, and it was awesome. The public got to watch it all. We noted that Councilor Iverson was appointed to the opioid settlement committee. However, I want to clarify myself that I should have said when calling that, the opioid settlement allocation working group. And if there's no objections to correcting that record and that designation, I will so order it. Seeing none. All right. So moved. Let's move on to item number eight, which is the Convention and Visitors Commission. And I believe we've got Mr. Campbell here.
Counsel, I move to approve the Convention and Visitors Commission's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1127-000, Convention Visitor Tourism, and the amount of $500,000 in the capital category.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Mr. Campbell, welcome us, and Ms. Whitmer, we appreciate you from Parks being here as well.
Yes. Thanks for having us. Want to let you know, on November the 28th, the Convention and Visitors Commission voted to approve an additional allocation for $500,000 out of our general fund for this important development in our community. This reinvestment in our community will add to all of our quality of life. It will also help us, this community recruits tournaments and draw events to our county promoting tourism and allow for the economic benefits of tourism to continue to bear fruit. While the CVC remains committed to the expansion of the convention center as the single biggest priority, this project was an opportunity for our community we could not pass up. We ask for the additional request of $500,000 from the general fund. This is in addition to our 2024 budget. These funds, as a reminder, come fully from the innkeeper's tax, which is collected from hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and short-term rentals. Want to assure you that the general fund is at a level it could provide this allocation and still meet all our budgeted allocations and commitments for 2024 and allow us to plan for the needs and requirements for the CVC as we move into planning for an expanded convention center. So, welcome. Any questions about the project?
Ms. Whitmer, you want to make some comments?
Well, actually, I do. We're very excited with all the support from the council and the commissioners and Mr. Campbell, of course. Tomorrow, the commissioners hopefully will be approving the engineering and design company, Blitzer, Rigger, Cooper, James. We already have two site visits that we're going to Rose Holman and we're going to Washington High School to look at, excuse me, natural infield for the synthetic turf. And what that is, is that when you watch an NFL game, you'll see the players dive across the field and you see black pellets come up. That's called crumb rubber. We are not going to be having crumb rubber on these fields. We will have a natural infield, which Washington High School and Rose Holman both have. And the fields usually are twenty degrees cooler than the crumb rubber fields. So basically, it's carpet and you put some infield in it. And also, when we do natural infield, we have a shock pad that we put under it and that shock pad should last around twenty years. And the carpet, synthetic, will last about every ten years and the top portion will need to be replaced. So we're moving along. We're not going to rush things because we're going to get this design correct the first time. If everything goes well, we may have synthetic. If everything goes well, we may have synthetic fields September of 2024, but everything has to go perfect. If not, it'll go into 2025 with the other projects, drainage, irrigation, LED lights. Three extra fields will be lit, including the synthetic fields. So this is a game changer, I'm telling you. So thank you, are there any questions?
Counselors, questions? Council McKim.
I guess this isn't so much a question but a comment. I, first of all, thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your support of this project. I'm, as a member of the CVC, I was excited to get to vote in favor of this as well, and I appreciate the support of the entire CVC on this exciting project. And then I also want to thank Ms. Whitmer for really being up on the environmental issues associated with artificial turf. And I know she's been, from the beginning, has been making us aware of the plans to use organic infill with the shock pad. And I know that the crumb rubber that's used in a lot of kind of first-generation turf fields has come under a lot of kind of public scrutiny due to the environmental impacts and health impacts. And I'm very happy that we're not looking in that direction and that we're using the kind of the latest information we can and the most progressive materials. So thank you very much for that.
We're excited really to go to Rose Holman because being engineers, they have a lot to tell us about their fields. And plus, they have two fields right next to each other, one's organic and one's crumb rubber. So we can actually go on each of the fields and see the differences.
Council Iverson.
You know, I've always been in support of this project and I just think it's so appropriate that this is coming from the CVC. This is, for me, this is all about economic development. It's about bringing people into our beautiful community and letting them see what we're all about. And this park and the improvements that we're doing is just a gateway to bring people here. I could not be more supportive of this and thank you both for bringing it back.
Council Munson.
Just hoping during your visit to Rose Holman and the two different fields, that you will fall down on them and make some sort of assessment of how injuries can be best treated with different surfaces. So I'm kidding about, I want you to fall down.
No, we actually are, we're bringing a soccer ball in and we'll be playing a little rough.
But certainly, certainly there have been some studies about this and I think that's important for people to know.
And these, well, be under warranty and they have to pass a test for shock absorptives. So.
I guess I was, I was on track with that.
It's just the same as like a playground surface.
Yeah.
So.
Council Hawk.
Yes, I'm excited about this, of course. Don't play soccer and don't have grandchildren, but I know there's a lot of people that's looking forward to this. But what I did hear from you is something I think that the financial body will need to keep an eye on is making sure that we have that ready for replacement in 10 years, that we need to see what that price is going to be, that you think that replacement and then the saving back for that so that we don't have a big shock at that 10-year out or, you know, if we have to do a bond or at least have it on our long-range plan of knowing something that we need to.
Well, good news there, Marty. We won't be able to pay for the complete replacement, but the Parks Board voted for, to take on our non-reverting account, 30,000 each year for 20 years for that purpose. And plus, we are also working with the cutters organization to also put a chunk of money in every year for replacement. It won't pay for the entire thing, but it'll be a really good start. And we worked with the auditor's office to make sure we can get this all set up, it'll go into our non-reverting account and we'll just keep a spreadsheet and we'll inform you all because you'll see our account growing, but can't, can't take it, it's for the carpet replacement.
That's wonderful news, that's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from council? Awesome. We'll move to public comment. If there's anyone here in the Nat U Hill room, you can come forward to the podium. If you're on teams, you can raise your hand. As you come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mr. President, council. I echo the statements of what we heard today, appreciate the CVC's work, the Parks, the Parks Board. Councilmember Iverson's on economic development. Councilmembers McKim on the environmental aspect, and then Councilmember Hawk on sort of the fiscal responsibility that you have. And this appropriation is economic development and it is worth moving forward on. Karst Park is an asset. I, full disclosure, am a parent of a soccer player and I think any improvement in that facility, it only enhances Monroe County. I talked to different soccer families, they like coming to Monroe County. This is fun for them, let's give them reasons to, let's enhance Karst Park. I think there's other improvements that can be made, but this is a good start to that and I just want to appreciate everybody's time and effort in it. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, we appreciate those comments from the chamber. All right, other hands or people coming forward? Seeing none, I think that will take us to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go now to item number nine, which is a request from the surveyor's office. And I see our surveyor is here, Mr. Enright Randolph.
Counsel, I move to approve the surveyor's request to amend the 2024 salary ordinance and fund 1202-0000, Surveyor's Corner Perpetuation Fund, account line 17301, board members to be paid $100 per person meeting.
Second.
All right, welcome, Mr. Surveyor.
Awesome, thank you so much for having me. I will not be as exciting as the last item, but I will try. I am pretty enthusiastic about being here. We've had the surveyors pay Ray at $50 per meeting for quite some time and it's definitely a great deal for the county, but we should be, you know, paying them accordingly. And I would just, I guess, say real quickly that you just saw the drainage board kind of requests that's very similar to this, except they were just quicker with the paperwork, so they got here first. I'll just read here, the Monroe County is requesting to increase per meeting amount paid to the surveyor review board members from $50 to 100, which requires amending the salary ordinance. Board members pay come out of the corner perpetuation fund, which is a non-reverting fund, and that will stay sustainable with this increase. As part of the statutory duties of the Office of the Monroe County Surveyor, we check, locate, establish, and reference public land surveying section corner monuments in the county. The surveyor board, who all are licensed surveyors, review, and there was a typo in the agenda that says timesheets, they do not review timesheets, they review tie sheets or monument corners. And, you know, they render their opinion, they give us guidance. We actually had a review board prior to this meeting at four o'clock and I told them I'm coming here to request if they wanted to come support it, but they decided to go home instead. So I'm here for any questions and looking for your support today.
Thank you very much. We'll go to questions from council. Counselor Hawk.
How many are on the board?
Great question. We have three current licensed surveyor on our board. We have Todd Boardman, Eric Deckard, and Rachel Lozer. We'll actually be going to the commissioners not tomorrow, but the following week to reappoint them. I actually reached out to a fourth member just recently at the Indiana Society of Professional Land Surveyors, his name is Doug Graham, and he expressed interest, so hopefully in July we'll bring one more member onto the board. We also just was able to offer employment for the PS position in the surveyor's office, so we want to kind of let them settle and then bring in another board member and I think that will just give us more knowledge of local surveyors here in the county.
Okay, I'm not sure that I got.
Three.
Okay, you started out with three, then you said, well, then another one, so then I think, I mean, we're talking budgeting here.
Oh, okay.
So we're talking four, then did you say, well, another one?
No, no.
Did you throw in something else in there?
What I, let me just restate that, we have currently three. I'm looking to ask for another member to serve in July. And we were fortunate enough to land a county employee to serve in the PS role, sorry, I kind of lumped all that together. No, no, we do not pay the county employee, so it will only be four total.
Okay, so four.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to get some kind of a fiscal analysis here.
Absolutely.
So do you meet once a month, once every?
Yeah, but we usually cancel probably two to three a year.
Nine meetings a month?
Yeah, nine meetings a year.
I mean, a year.
Yeah.
Nine times four.
Yeah, our fund will be completely sustainable.
Nine times $50, all right.
But yeah, the impact, I can't see greater than 4,000 a year. And that's with the additional member.
And is it, is it set at four or is there, I mean, is there some kind of?
I don't think we're allowed to have more than five. This was a policy passed in 97 and I don't want to speculate too much, but there is a cap and I think the cap is five. I don't foresee me wanting to ask anyone else to serve on that board more than four.
Other questions from counselors or comments? Seeing, Mr. Keane.
And I just looked at the 1997 ordinance which Tron had sent me and he is correct, it's capped at five, so one but no more than five surveyors.
That's the last time I read it, I couldn't recall, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, other counselors' comments? Seeing none, we will go to the public for their comments. If you're in the Nat U Hill, come forward to the podium, state your name. If you're on teams, you can raise your hand. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Surveyor. Takes us to item 10, a request from the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a new account line, 35003, Reprographics, and fund 1197-0000, Storm Water Management.
Second.
All right, we want to welcome Ms. Lisa Ridge to the podium. Ms. Ridge, what can you tell us?
Um, so just an oversight, we had this in our original 2024 budget, but it was not adopted into our 2024 budget. The IT Department requested us change it from the copier, old copier line to the reprographics line, so we just need to get that included into our 2024 budget.
Questions or comments from council? Scan and Counsel McKim.
At the risk of not being germane here, would you mind just telling the council about the bid lettings that just happened? It's important, people care about that.
It is very important. Did you want me to wait until after my item or did you want me to do it in the middle of this item?
Why don't you do it at the end, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure you didn't run off.
She does a good job.
People care about that a lot more than the line for repro.
Any other comments, questions on the items so we can get to the good stuff? How about comments from the public on this item? Raise your hand or come forward, the Nat U Hill, not seeing the interest, let's go to a roll call vote.
We don't have to do a roll call.
Oh, we don't?
No, you can do a voice vote.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same side. All right, passes. Now, I think Counsel McKim's question.
There is another one. Might as well.
Okay, let's go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a new account line, 23412, Traffic Signal Maintenance, and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $300,000 in the supplies category.
Second.
Search.
So we have two traffic signal locations where the equipment is needing updated and replaced. One is at Curry and Vernal Pike and the other is Old State Road 37 South and Fairfax Road. We've received two quotes for each intersection and then we put in a little bit extra. We have loops, detection loops at the Old 37 and Fairfax, so if we have to replace those loops, which we anticipate in the spring of doing that, this will be the funds to do that and then replace the pavement, paving after it.
All right, thank you much. Questions, comments from council? Counselor Wiltz?
I just want to say thank you for that clarification because I had missed that, the actual surface work, and I'm thinking, my goodness, do people realize how expensive these traffic lights are?
Yeah, and Curry and Vernal, we had kind of looked into that and we're doing, I believe we're doing camera detection there again that we had done in the past, but it'll all be updated equipment.
Right.
All right, other questions, comments, I'm not seeing any. Let's go to public comment, come forward, the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none on this, can I do a voice vote?
This one, we need a roll call since it's an appropriation.
We tried. Let's do a roll call vote.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Need another pan vote.
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, now, the good stuff.
Sorry, Jeff, I wasn't trying to be mean. So we had our letting on January 18th for our Karst Trail Extension. That project was estimated at 2.3 million, the bid for that, the letting for that was 2.7 million. Endot, right now, we have just 389,209, 389,209,000 appropriated from NPO for that project, the rest was to be local. Endot is going to step up and they're going to make that an 80/20 project, so we will only be responsible for that 20%. The Fullerton Pike Project also went to letting that day, that the low bid was 18.8 million. We are going to award that project, that's why we did the major bridge bond. We only have just, we added a million dollars last month to the bridge portion, so we have about 3.8 million in federal funding. The rest will come from our major bridge fund, our major bridge bond, the Fullerton Pike TIF. So we will, actually, I just got the paperwork today to sign and accept those projects and we will move forward with the construction of both of those in 2024.
That's great.
Thank you.
And thank you, just on behalf of all of us going after those dollars, you know those state dollars.
Wanted more for Fullerton Pike, but, you know, I got to stop begging sometime.
You have a pretty good success rate, it's like Babe Ruth. Any other questions, comments from Ms. Ridge while she's here? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number 11 on the agenda with the probation department.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for the creation of the new account lines and fund 9172-0000, Drug Treatment Court, PSCIOCS, as is set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $9,828 in the supplies category and $18,500 in the service category for a total appropriation of $28,328.
Second.
With us tonight, we have Becca Strife from our probation department. Ms. Strife, floor of jurors.
Thank you, Becca Strife, Community Corrections Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. For 2024, the Indiana Office of Court Services allowed us to apply for this type of money for all four of our problem-solving courts, so that would be our Drug Treatment Court, Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, and Reentry Court. So all the requests that we had in the grant are similar throughout all So um all the requests that we had in the grant are similar throughout all four courts. I'll just highlight these. The first are supervision incentives. We know that incentivizing uh good behavior and good thought change is a protective factor for our clients. It helps motivate them, and so we have money set aside in order to provide tangible incentives. So beyond just a attaboy or, or good job, we actually can provide our clients with gift cards. Every court session, Judge Decoff does a fishbowl drawing in her Problem Solving Court, so if people throughout the week um had positive change or did something positive, their name goes into that fishbowl, and then they get drawn. The other thing that we also consider an incentive, and it's very popular, uh, is a twenty-five dollar waiver off one of your drug tests. So that's a, a crowd pleaser. Uh, the next item, our drug test supplies. This pot of money goes towards instant cups, so we don't have to send those cups to an outside lab. We collect the, the drug test right in our office, and if it's negative, we keep, we don't have to send it off. There's no extra cost. Um, of course, if there's a question of, of what the results say, we do send that off, but this is a, a, a cost-saving measure for our clients. Um, traveling and training, this has been a standard request that we've asked for. Our entire Problem Solving Court team, that's, that extends beyond just our case managers, but it also includes treatment agencies, police agencies who sit on our Problem Solving Court team. They are all eligible to attend the National Drug Court Conference every year. I cannot remember where this year's is. I want to say California, but we're able to use this, this money to take team members to that training. And then lastly is the contractual. Every couple of years, it's actually built into the Problem Solving Court rules that we are required to have an evaluation of our programs. This is different than a certification or a recertification that through with Indiana Office of Court Services. The evaluation is actually where we partner and contract with a university researcher. Um, and they do a full evaluation on our Problem Solving Courts, looking at what we do. They speak to clients or participants. They survey staff, and they, and the researchers then make evaluation and recommendations for us. Our last one was done in twenty nineteen, previous to that was twenty fourteen. Both of those prior evaluations are on our probation website, on the Monroe County website page, if anybody's interested in reading those. Um, but we actually have a meeting this week with a member from IU who we're going to be talking about how we can get going for our twenty twenty-four evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to questions or comments from counsel. All right, seeing none. We'll go to comments from the public. If you have comments, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, we'll go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation Department's request for the creation of new account lines and Fund ninety-one, sixty-eight, dash, zero, 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 Mental Health Court, P S C I, I O C S, as is set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars in the Supplies category and eighteen thousand five hundred in the Service category for a total appropriation of twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
Same information applies. I don't, I don't have anything additional to add for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, we will go to comments from the public. Again, uh, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Let's move on to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation Department's request for the creation of new account lines and Fund ninety-one, sixty-six, dash, zero, 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 Reentry Court Program, P S C I O C S, as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars in the Supplies category and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars in the Service category for a total appropriation of twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
All right, not much to add here. Any comments or questions from counsel? Seeing none, how about comments from the public? Please raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation Department's request for the creation of new account lines and Fund ninety-one, seventy, dash, zero, 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 Veterans Treatment Court, P S C I O C S, as is set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars in the Supplies category and five thousand dollars in the Services category for a total appropriation of nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
And just to note, the only reason this is a bit different is we are not required to do the evaluation for Veterans Court this year.
Comments or questions from counsel?
I get, I, I guess that just uh raises the question, why not?
Yes, the courts came in, it started at different times.
Okay, so it, it, it will still require evaluation, just not at the same cycle. Thank you.
One item of note I just want to make for public watching at home, this is yet another department that is very successful, just like the last one you saw with Highway, of going after important dollars and bringing them into this community. And Ms. Stride's taking us through all that. We're bringing it into our service and our work. When you see things like Veterans Court, Reentry Court, those are things that this community has led on and done to solve some of the tough issues we've had for many years. And it'll be that kind of innovation and leadership we use in the coming days on our justice discussion. Okay. No other comments? Let's go to public comments. Raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, we'll go to item E.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation Department's request for an additional appropriations and Fund eleven, twenty-three, dash, ninety-six, twenty-four, Community Transition Program of nine thousand dollars in the Services category.
Second.
I believe this was just a mistake in the advertising. I, I'm looking at Michelle because she knows the answer.
Yes, what happened was, this was, I think, back in December, maybe, something like that. It was advertised low, and there was a, due to a typo. So this is correcting what they actually wanted. So this will bring them up to what they actually requested back in December.
Yep. Questions, comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. Raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Stride. We're at that portion where we're going to, because we've got some work ahead of us and work behind of us, we're going to take a seven-minute recess. We will come back uh at six thirty-seven. So uh counselors, go ahead and do that. We'll see you in just a moment. All right, thanks, everybody. We're going to come back to our agenda and specifically item number twelve, which is our American Rescue Plan Act. And as I understand it, based on some descriptions, we've got some work we need to do to keep on time and compliant with those projects. I'm going to ask Ms. Molly Turner King or the uh County Financial Director, Ms. Gregory, what, what can you tell us that this council needs to know?
Sure, um, thank you. So tonight, um, I'm asking that we please um reappropriate, actually, because these were already previously approved in twenty twenty-three, but reappropriate our um Permanent Supportive Housing Initiative, which is um Funding Beacon for um some of the work they do um to provide housing for those um experiencing um homelessness. And then um, and that is five hundred thousand dollar appropriation. And the other um funding is for the Community Kitchen um who um assists with providing meals for our community.
The amount on that?
Um.
Four hundred.
Four hundred thousand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is simply reappropriating because we did it last year. We need to stay current this year. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Um, so yes, this is, these were already discussed and approved at a previous meeting. However, we didn't have um the formal agreements in place to carry the appropriations forward, so we need to um reappropriate at this time.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Hawk?
Yes, uh, I know you're tired of having me ask this question, but I ask it and ask it and ask it. And I'm really not pleased with the uh financials that we are getting having to do with the housing. Um, I've made it pretty clear what we would expect. We would expect the same thing of any group where we gave, you know, allowed money for. This is the money you started out with. This is what you spent, and this is what you spent it on. This is what you've got left. This is what your projection is for next year, et cetera. And that is the same kind of thing that we, the reporting that we have to turn in to the state, having to do with our food and beverage money. So it shouldn't be uh that difficult. Now, maybe you think you, you've received all that. I see a hand up. Did you receive all that?
Counselor McCam? No, I just want to make it clear. We, I, I believe what you're referring to is the heading home appropriation, right?
Right. And I want to make sure that, that's what, which part we're talking about.
This, my understanding, just from what I've already heard, is that this is for Beacon, which is their permanent supportive housing. This is our commitment essentially uh for their permanent supportive housing project and then a Community Kitchen appropriation, right?
Okay, so that's why I voted against.
You did vote against it.
I just want to make sure I didn't, like, change horses' history.
You're welcome to vote yes this time.
Always a chance. Uh, questions, comments from other members of the council? And I'll just offer again, this is financial housekeeping to keep these moving and, and, and fund these initiatives that we've well discussed and debated, right?
And voted on.
And voted on. So there's history and record there. All right, any other further comments or questions?
We need a motion, please.
Yeah, there we go. Uh, Counselor McCam, you have one?
Oh, uh, well, let's see. Do, I guess I don't, I didn't know these details until just this moment. Do we have line numbers? Okay, coun, council, I move that we uh approve an additional appropriation, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, Fund eighty-nine, fifty, dash, zero, 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 Line three, seven, four, eight, eight, ARPA Community Kitchen Food for four hundred thousand dollars, and Line three, six, seven, one, three, ARPA Permanent Supporting Housing Initiative, five hundred thousand dollars, Beacon.
Second.
Split the vote, please.
We've got a motion in a second. There's been a request to split the vote, and that I will grant. All right, so we have a divided question here. Um, any further comments or questions from counsel? Okay, one thing I just want to note for public watching, when you hear us do lines and those details, that's because one of these days we have to go back and look to make sure we're accurate. So we take a little time with that, and I appreciate Michelle kind of chasing them down in the courthouse earlier. All right, let's take these one at a time, and we'll start with the appropriation of five hundred thousand for Beacon as the first roll call vote. Uh, first before, let me see if there's any comments from the public. Please raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on the Beacon appropriation.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed six, one.
Thank you. Next, we have on the divided question, appropriation of four hundred thousand for Community Kitchen. Is there any comments or quest, or comments from the public? Raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote on the Kitchen appropriation.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
And Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
And I need, I'm, I need to print another page, so you won't see him here for just a moment.
All right, so signature page is coming. Do we have anything else under ARPA that we need to do to keep us compliant or moving on these projects? Give a second, we're figuring.
I apologize. Um, the deappropriation, if we could table, that would be.
Without objection, we'll table the uh deappropriation on the agenda, item number B, until the next meeting. No objection? So ordered. Counselor Wiltz, question?
Does that mean we have to re-advertise A, the appropriation, because we acted on it?
Yeah, we, um, Bree has already submitted a, a bunch of um ARPA stuff that needs to be redone, so we're just redoing the whole thing. So we don't need to table these.
Thank you.
Good thinking. All right, let's go to item thirteen A from Council Office and I believe Michelle.
Counsel, I move to approve the Sheriff's request to amend the account lines and the twenty twenty-four Salary Ordinance and Fund one, zero, 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 dash, zero, 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 five, General Fund, Sheriff, as set out on the agenda.
Second.
I'm going to pitch hit on this. Um, so this request comes from the Sheriff's Department, but also at the request of Council Office. Um, it's to remove the detail in their account lines. So right now, it says things like Merit Deputy K-9 Unit, and they just wanted to say Merit Deputy across the board, which will help with, when they fill vacancies, because right now what's happening is with that added detail, when they fill a vacancy for, if the K-9 line came vacant and they put someone in there who's not a K-9, then we're just shuffling everything around. So if all the lines say Merit Deputy, it makes that shuffling a little bit less cumbersome.
We'll go to comments or questions from counsel. I'm not seeing any. We'll go to comments from the public. If you have a comment, please raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Mr. President, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that I have contacted their financial people to say, is there any uh financial fiscal impact? And the answer was no, there will not.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move to item B.
Council, I move to approve the Sheriff's request to amend Account Line 10167, Merit Deputy Detective to Merit Deputy and the 2024 Salary Ordinance and Fund 1170-0005 Public Safety Lit, Sheriff.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Ms. Turner King?
This is a request similar to the first one. The first one was the account lines in general, and this is applicable to account lines in PS Lit.
All right. Comments, questions from council? Not seeing any. We'll go to comments from the public. Come forward to the Nat U Hill, raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulty trying to print over here, so.
We'll give you a second or more.
Which one? PS Lit, thank you. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Item 14A was tabled on the agenda. It's the CIB. We look forward to that at the next meeting and positive success. On B, go ahead.
Council, I move to approve Resolution 2024-04, extending the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Second.
Very much. And for this, Ms. Turner King?
The resolution before you for consideration embodies a motion that was made in December to extend the JFAC Committee into this year. Originally, the JFAC resolution had that committee sunsetting in December of last year. So this extends it into this year. And for the purposes of that the committee can provide updates to the whole council regarding the JFAC recommendations listed within the report that they were able to publish.
Questions, comments from council? Counselor Iverson?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm happy to report that as the administrative chair, I have had a meeting with council staff to discuss and updates to the JFAC report, and that will be scheduled at your pleasure.
Let's make sure that happens. Absolutely. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Seeing none. We will go to comments from the public. You've got comments? Please raise your hand on teams or come forward to the Nat U Hill room. Seeing any? We will go ahead to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item C?
Council, I move to approve Resolution 2024-05, establishing the Long-Term Finance Planning Committee.
Second.
This resolution embodies the idea presented at the last council meeting regarding the formation of a long-term planning committee. It lays out the structure, that being, it will consist of, the committee will consist of three council members, one of which is the council president, and then the two other members of that committee to be appointed by the council president. And then it lists the duties and responsibilities of that committee.
Thank you very much. You all recall this from, I believe, the last meeting. They're starting to blend together, and I've only been doing this too. That's a bad sign, friends. But on a seri- a very serious note, we have talked for a long time. Counselor Wiltz has talked about Counselor Hawke, Counselor McKim, Counselor, everybody's talked about the need to forecast, think ahead. I think this strong group of Counselor Hawke, Counselor McKim, and hopefully I can help them, is going to do just that, to look at those things that we need to look at and also help us to prepare for the things we need to prepare for that perhaps are not in our vision. Somebody said really wisely in 2019, we probably weren't thinking about a pandemic. And then we had one, and it was the good stewardship of counselors who'd gone before that built some things that really saved us from running this county. Not to diminish anything else that did, that did that, but we had some money there because we were smart years before. This committee will do that. So with that, I'll be quiet. But any other comments, questions? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. To be clear, this document says that this is clearly not a budget committee. So that means that the three of us, or the three of us, or any three, can meet together to discuss budgets, projections on budgets, or whatever. Because my interest is, where are we now? Where do we think we were going to be? What, where we think we're going to be in six months or so forth? I'm happy to serve on this committee, but I just wanted you to know that I will also be reaching out having to do with budgets. And I don't want a regular committee on that. We'll just meet together as we, as any three might choose, or two, or one.
Absolutely. And I, I want to know, Ms. Turner King, we're very hard to word this in a way that lets us do our job and be publicly transparent and come back and do our job even more. And that is not easy, and she did a good job on, on doing that. Counselor McKim, did you have comments?
Yeah, just, I'm, I'm very much support this. And I think one of the things that we're going to be able to do with this committee is kind of get more closely engaged with our hired financial planning consultants, which I think we all agree we have underutilized so far. And I, and we have to, you know, we, we have to make sure we round up what kinds of information we need from them. And I think this will be a good opportunity to.
To respond to that as well, the last report that we received from them, things had happened here locally that they were not aware of. And so it's important that we work closely so that when they're making a projection, they know where we are.
Absolutely. The information is only as good as what they have to work with, right? Any other comments or questions? All right. Courthouse Bell is telling us it's time to go to public comment. If you are in the Nat U Hill, come forward. If you have comment, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. It takes us to item number 15 on our agenda, Approval Minutes.
Council, I move to approve the summary minutes for the September 14th, 2023 Budget Work Session Number Five, September 20th, 23 Budget Session, Budget Work Session Number Six, October 17th, 2023, 24 Budget Adoption, and December 12th, 2023, Regular Session as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments or discussion on the minutes? Seeing none on that. Public, if you have any comments on these minutes, raise your hand on teams or come forward to the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
You can do a voice vote.
Voice vote, it is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same time. Voices, the ayes carried it. And that takes us to item 16, Council Comments. Counselor Iverson?
I, I just want to be really present and intentional at this space, that we just experienced a lot of cold. Boris Ladwig wrote an article in today's Herald Times about how there were about 10 or 15 people who are at risk of freezing to death on the streets of, in our community. And if it weren't for volunteers moving them into the Stride Center and other places, they most likely would have frozen to death. I just want to send a huge thank you to all those volunteers that literally saved those lives. Thank you to the Stride Center staff for being there and taking those folks in. And in, in the article, it points out that as local government, we've got to step up the way that we think about those experiencing homelessness and how we're treating them. It's not just about getting people out of tent encampments. It's also about protecting people from the elements. It's a great article. Read it.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Munson?
On a very different note, I wanted to announce that there is a new exhibit at the Monroe County History Center that has just opened, the Barnes of Monroe County. And if any, those of you who've seen our barn, I'll just let you know that it is one of five featured. Ours is the East Munson Barn. Not that we have a West one, but it is named for the East family that originally built the barn. And I guess our name goes on the, on this barn because we stood it back up again. And it was about to fall apart. So it's a great exhibit. I hope you'll check it out. And there's a virtual reality component to it. There are glasses you can see, and that means you don't have to come out and climb around in our barn and climb up a very rickety ladder to get up to the loft. You can, you can do it virtually.
Can, can we though? Can we climb up, climb up the rickety ladder?
You can. We, we have, we have insurance that covers this because our daughter used to have slumber parties up in the hay loft of the barn.
That reminds me of a conversation I just had with the assessor, that she visits the, the barns and literally has to go inside to check the barns if they are, oh, now I forgot, not tongue in groove. I can't remember the, the name of it. It's how they are put together without nails. And so they, and so they get special.
Timber frames.
But, but at any rate, so that she and her department literally go out and, and see these facilities. So the assessor's office does so much more than most of us here on the council or on staff have any idea that they're doing. And that's the reason why I'm trying to encourage every council member to go visit with those folks because they're really looking forward and want to see your faces in their office. The other thing I wanted to mention, because as you might know, I spend a lot of my time this time of the year seeing what's going on at the state. And I was so very, very happy to see our state representative, Dave Hall, pushing forward with a result of listening to his constituents who asked for some assistance. Because that's what we send these people to the state for, is to help out with local concerns. And it did pass the House today and will be going to the Senate. I expect it to pass at the Senate as well. Now, what I have, my concern for sharing this is there's a big split on whether or not that's a good thing. That's why we have people at the state that we vote for to take our concerns to the state. But when that was first put in place, I want to remind you, there was no seats left in this room, nor out there. The community came out and said, don't do this. Don't put in that 25% slope. You are destroying. And it was farmers, it was realtors, it was developers. It was just the average John Q citizen off of the street. So this was not like a, something that the community all said we had to have it. There was a lot in the community saying, there's a happy medium, and this is not the happy medium. So I was concerned to see that we had a staff person go to the state to testify. I would expect our elected officials to go.
And they do.
Yes, but not a staff person. People work hard to get elected here, to get the, the people to know that we are going to represent them, we're going to listen to them, and we're going to speak for them. They don't vote for the staff. And especially a staff that represents more than just one idea on the Plan Commission. Because as you know, it's not always a 100% vote, and nor should it be if we have a lot of discussion about an important project. So I think we just need to take a sec, step, step back and understand the difference between the elected officials that the public votes for and the staff that they do not vote for. There's a big difference.
Counselor Hawke?
Counselor Crossley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. One, I just wanted to say thank you to the city of Bloomington for putting on a spectacular MLK event. It was cold. And for those that weren't able to come in person, you can see it via CATS and take a look at that. So thank you so much for the city of Bloomington for that. I also don't want to get discouraged about us tabled in the CIB and are local. I know that there's, there's a lot of work that is still happening and to be done. And I'm still hopeful that all of the, the delegation and all the movement will get us to the finish line as we desperately need. And lastly, speaking of constituents and listening to constituents, one of the biggest things that I keep hearing a lot of times is sometimes constituents have an idea of what should be county-related versus what city-related is. And oftentimes, it's a, it's a blur between the two. So one of the things that I really wanted to do to push myself as a council member this year is to really push forward to have constituent meetings. But in particular, to put a spin on constituent meetings. So what I have decided to do is to have a monthly constituent meeting, but I'm going to have that in conjunction with city councilperson, Isak Asari. So he is a county, or city councilperson at large. And we decided that that would be a really good time for us to blend city and county, and constituents of the light can come to our meetings. So we hope, I think in the next day or so, we should be releasing when we will have our meeting. And all are encouraged to come and listen to what we have to say. And we also will listen to what you have to say as well. But we really want to make sure that we are listening to the constituents and properly getting the message and information out there to the bodies that be. So thank you.
It's a good idea.
Thank you very much. I, I'll just make a couple quick comments here. Of course, we'd be remiss and wrong not to thank our highway folks who've been out in various weather conditions and at the drop of a hat for all of that. We know that they're always watching when sometimes we're sleeping, and we're just grateful to you for all that and all that you may yet do, although I hope spring is closer than not. Thanks also to our emergency management team that's monitoring that, those of us that get those emails. They're watching every radar potential for every potential for all of us. So we're grateful for that. We don't want them to stop. I also want to echo something that Counselor Crossley said. We have had good dialogue, particularly with our city council friends, on moving the CIB forward. And that is the way forward on all of these issues and making good things happen. I also appreciate Mayor Thompson, who sent an invitation to this entire county council for her State of the City address coming up in April. It's on a council night. As Counselor Munson quickly found the issue, but we appreciate the sentiment, Mayor. So thank you so much, and we'll, we'll, we'll watch the CATS review of it and see how it goes. We send our best wishes to you on that. And with that, being no other business before this council, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.